Not yet. The lights are not on?
My, that's a whole day.
Okay. It's recording.
Meeting's canceled.
I know.
You're good.
We're good?
Yep.
Lights not on, but...
The light's not working. Go ahead.
Okay, everybody, we came out of non-public and now we're gonna stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, Jim, do your thing.
Mr. Chair, I would move that we seal the minutes to the aforementioned non-public until such time as a majority of the board feels it is wise and prudent to unseal them, with the exception of announcing to the bookkeeper those human resource items that she needs to be informed of.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, approval of minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I would approve the public and non-public minutes dated November 20th, 2018.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we'll move down to scheduled business. A, new fire rescue station project update. Mike, would you like to get up and give us an update?
Good evening, Board, Mike Pevero, Eastern Sea Board, Construction Manager for the New Newton Fire Station. I gotta start by saying, I'm glad there's such an audience. I wish this was like this every Selectman's meeting. Except the two or three seats that are normally filled. I'm gonna, one of the Selectmen on the Board asked me a week or so ago to put together a little narrative that brought us kinda cradle to grave. I'm gonna try to keep this as brief as possible, hopefully under ten minutes, and then we'll go from there. There's a few people in this room that sat on the Newton Building Committees, which that was, I think that went on for two years. After the Newton Building Committee did their research on all the facilities in town, it was decided by that committee, the one building that needed attention first was the Newton Fire Station. I was on those committees, I sat on all of it. It was all volunteer time by myself and other people that sat on that. People that are concerned about the community. From there, it went to the Newton Fire Station Building Committee, which again, I sat on. That went on for, I believe, another two years. I'm giving you rough approximates, I don't have dates, but ballpark. So there were four years spent on review and the need that the town, or, yeah, the need, and the need was a new fire station for the town of Newton. At the end of the second year, the station went, the Building Committee went to the Selectmen and said that we need a new station. So we pursued it a little bit more. We hired an engineering company to look at the old Butler Building up at Eight Merrimack Road. They reviewed that and the determination was that that was gonna be too costly to modify that and to make it a fire station. So, at that point, it was determined that a new station would be built ground up. Through all this, I, I'm telling you, there's nobody in this room that knows the scenario from cradle to grave better than me. I sat on the committees, I spent the time, and I'm here as the construction manager, which we'll get to in a minute, that the Board selected. I'm pretty passionate about this, from beginning to end, of building this new station. The firemen needed it, it was long overdue, so I hung in there. So, we'll take it to the next step. The Selectmen, through the Building Committee, reached out and did reviews for an architect to be involved in this project. After reviewing some of the architectural firms, it was selected that Port One, who Kelly Davis is the representative of Port One sitting in the back row, was selected for this project. We put it to the voters in town in 2016. Myself, Jim Ryan, who's sitting here, I don't know if the other gentleman's here, but... A few of us did the presentation. The Chairman of the Fire Station Building Committee did them with myself. So, we did it in the deliberative session. The first year, it narrowly failed. So, we sat on it, it was discussed by the Board and the Building Committee that would make another run at it in '17. We did that. And it narrowly passed. It was very close, but it did pass. Once it passed, the Board of Selectmen met with Kelly Davis and continued his services for the building aspect of this project. Now, in that, which I was not privy to, Port One had a proposal to the Selectmen that one of his proposals was a soup-to-nut set of gramps. I'm not 100% sure what that number was, the Board would know. The Board did not offer that, they opted for him to oversee, and Kelly was extremely helpful during this process, beginning right up till now. We had meetings at the beginning of this project, they were, I think they were weekly. As the project progressed, things were unfolding, they went to monthly, and still to this day, he's involved in it, trying to get through some of the nuances of getting this thing completed. The Selectmen put this out to bid for a construction manager. I'm gonna tell you, I'm standing here, I agonized over even entertaining doing this project, but I thought at the time it would be, because again, I was passionate about this, that I would put my name in the ring, if I get selected, great, if I didn't get selected, fine, I've got plenty of work. You guys did your review process. It went for, I don't know how long, you guys would know better than I did, but it went on for quite a while. You brought it to a shortlist, I was on the shortlist. You interviewed me, I had a resume, as I would in any of the situations, and through that procedure, you selected me to do the job. I'm not gonna lie to anybody in this room, standing here right now, I wish I never put my name in the ring. Never, I wish I never put my name in the ring. 'Cause this is ridiculous. So, we'll go to current time, there's a set of drawings right there. There's a board up there for everybody in this room to go up and analyze, if you'd like to. That's the same board that's been presented since 2017. 2017. There's literature here, which if you'd like, you might be able to get it, or pass them around. Take them, pass them around, read it. Because that breaks down what this station was proposed, back then, right to now. There's nothing hidden. There's no shell game. There was nothing deceitful done in any of this. And I'm understanding, listen, folks, I don't go on Facebook. I think it's a ridiculous forum.
Hey, Mike?
What?
Let's stay off the Facebook, we're just gonna talk about the building. Yeah, I know.
Okay, I will. I'll go back to the topic. So, there's literature, the edit's getting passed around, review it, absorb it. It was all put in in two deliberative sessions, two deliberative sessions, that people could've asked questions. So, we're back to the job now, sorry about that. As you can see, I'm a little passionate about this. So, we've gone through this procedure, we built the thing at the beginning of this project, and I'll go through a few of the extras that weren't part of the original concept of this. The one, and the first one we stumbled upon, was during the Building Committee, there was talk and a proposal for a radio tower that was gonna go up on that site. I think the chief contacted somebody, there was a company that was gonna come in, put a radio tower up there, which during the Building Committee, that eliminated all our radio costs. So, this project didn't have any radio costs in it, none. Well, that didn't happen. So, this, this construction project had to absorb the radio and the tower, hence the cupola that's up on the roof, wasn't part of the original job. But we got it, we got it done, Kelly Davis worked on it, we made it happen. The radios are up there, and we absorbed it in the cost of the construction. Two, which now has become the 800-pound gorilla in the room, is the sprinkler system. During the budget and during the Fire Station Building Committee, the budget, the, the, the whole project was talked about, and in it, costs, obviously, a sprinkler system. We got no municipal water up there, we've got no three-phase power up there. It's down to 108. The research was done, and how much it would cost to bring three-phase power into the job, it was very costly, Unitil gave us a number. Again, this was during the Fire Station Building Committee. And then, water, we have no municipal water. So, we talked about it. We, for the lack of a better word, consulted the local authorities. We went through a design, which is the design that's up there right now. The one we put in was the one that was talked about four or five years ago now. That's what we put in. There was no talk at that time of, of doing a full-blown sprinkler system, which now we have to do, because the system we put in was supposed to get approvals from the state, and it never got the approvals from the state. It was not my job to get those approvals. But it didn't happen. Everything up there is built to code, all the subcontractors have done their homework, every subcontractor on that job has done a fantastic job. There's not one that hasn't. Matter of fact, all of them did above and beyond what was expected of them. They wanted to. So, any code issues that are being brought up shy of the sprinkler system, and you know what, shame on me on the sprinkler system, 'cause there's a gentleman sitting on the back row, Kelly Davis, was in the meetings early on. And he said to me, and I should've listened, he said to me, "Don't go any farther on this project until we get that approval." You know what? I was squeezed between a rock and a hard place. I was being asked by the Board when the building was gonna be completed and done. The fire station, the fire guys were anxious to get into the station. So, again, in hindsight, blame me for it, I should've shut the project down and waited for that approval. I didn't do it. Wanna blame me for that, that's fine. But my goal, and what you people hired me for, was to get that thing done as fast as possible and keep it on the budget. That's what I did. That's what I did right to this minute. And I'm gonna conclude, and then people come, come up and ask whatever questions they'd like to ask.
All right, we're gonna...
Not done.
Okay.
So, here's the budget.
All right, listen, if it, if it's gonna have a problem in here, we're gonna shut this meeting down very quick tonight. Everybody's gonna stay in order. You will have a chance.
I'm seeing if I can answer, I'm seeing if I can...
All right, enough!
...answer a lot of questions before you get up here.
Mike.
All right. End the discussion, or we're gonna end the meeting.
What's my daughter got to do with this?
Okay, Mike. All right, one more, listen, one more, we're gonna shut the meeting down, and it's not gonna happen. You wanna work together and get, I'm talking! If you wanna make the meeting happen, let's all be orderly and be respectful, okay? Mike has the podium right now, when he's done, we're gonna allow everybody to come up and have conversations.
I'm gonna be done in a minute.
All right.
Here's the summary, right now, as we stand in this room, for the people that think this is 50% over budget, there's $216,906 left in the kitty. Ask your questions.
All right, we're gonna allow people to come up and ask questions. Everybody can come up, ask one question. After everybody else's, after your questions, if you have a second one, you can come up and ask another one. We're not gonna let one person monopolize the microphone and let nobody else get a chance to talk. When you come up, you need to name, state your name, where you live, and your address. And this is to be talked about the building only. Did I miss anything?
No, I think you got it.
Okay.
How long do they have? Do I have a time limit or not, or just have...
They have a few minutes, ask one question, they'll get the answer. After everybody's done, if they have more questions, they can come up and ask another question. Okay, would anybody like to come up and ask a question, Cheryl? And the questions will be asked to the Board of Selectmen, and we will determine who's gonna answer the question.
Can we write their name and address on that piece of paper for me, please?
And when you come up to speak, put your name and your address on the paper.
Hi.
Is the microphone?
Or you can use a podium, too.
My question is...
Oh, can you say your name and address?
My name is Cheryl Saunders, I live at 4 Little Street. Whose job was it to get the approval for the sprinkler system? You said that there was somebody that was supposed to do it, and it wasn't yours, it was somebody else's. Whose was it?
Thank you, the Board of Selectmen can answer that question.
So, the Board's looking to me to answer this question, and I thank the Board for letting me do that. So, the, basically, what you're talking about is accountability, and what we can tell you tonight is there will be accountability for that lapse in the project, but the, so, let me finish. So, the, the law protects our right to protect the reputations of who that person or persons are. So, at this meeting, in a public meeting on TV, we're not going to name a person, but the Board is going to hold people accountable for that.
I would like to add that ultimately, the Board of Selectmen has ownership of that misstep.
I would agree.
All right.
Hi, my name is Andrew Witty, I've lived in town for 34 years, since I was born. I live over at 43 North Main Street, across from Rose Corner. I would just like first to apologize to Mr. Pevero here, if for any, anything that might've come from my direction towards you, I think you've done a fantastic job, you're a great employee for the town, and I appreciate you. My only question would be to the Board is, what exactly is the involvement of the fire chief in the budget and the Building Committee for the new fire station, and how much of it does he oversee, and how much of it is he involved in?
Okay, Chief, you want to answer that?
John Alcindino, Fire Chief. To answer the question, the Fire Chief has zero. I do not touch the budget, I do not authorize any expenditures of it, including all the way to the sprinkler system, zero.
Any other questions?
Laura Hill, Dean West Main Street.
Should we have you sign in? Sign in, please.
Paper on your right?
Excuse me, could they use the mic so we can hear them?
That was one of the things I was gonna say. As far as Mr. Pevero being frustrated about Facebook, we're all frustrated, too.
Okay, we're not gonna discuss Facebook at all.
But I'm gonna, I just wanna be able to say that the communication on this project stinks. The website setup has no information on it after 10:10 of '17, where it said there was upcoming events. The only time that has been updated since last year is when I requested that the corrective action plan be put on there. So, the frustration that people who are not even on Facebook are feeling, I can understand that frustration feeling like you're spoken about, but you took this job on. I'm, I'm sorry, but don't admonish people for looking to communicate when we don't feel that there's any communication coming in.
Okay, every Selectman's meeting, on every agenda, there is a new fire station, rescue station project update that anybody could've watched on TV, read the minutes, came in and asked questions for the last two years. So, we, there has been communication.
The things that are communicated are not the things that people are looking for.
And they, people should be in here asking those questions.
Okay. I can leave it at that, or I can keep going?
For two years.
So, I'm gonna leave it at that. My, my one question would be regarding grants. In the past six months, I've gone over all of the minutes. For instance, the exhaust system in March 2008, there was potential for grant money to cover the station. Mr. Pevero stated the system should be installed prior to finishing the building. I was also gonna comment on the radio system, which we explained already, that was not covered in the price for the, for the building. I think that people in the town are also looking for answers on why certain things are being shut up under other budgets, one of the items on there being door locks for over $7,000. In June, the chief addressed the Board and reiterated that funding for the interior of the fire station would be the town's responsibility.
Okay, are you asking about grants, or are you gonna...
I'm asking about the four to five times that we were told that things were being covered by grants. And it looks to me like Celeste Merle is the only person who's made a statement in June stating that relying on grants to fund the needed equipment for the rescue station in the service to the town, because now we need to come up with the money to fund anticipated equipment needing. So, I'd like to know what grants, aside from the emergency operations stuff, were applied for.
Okay, Chief, you said, you wanna come up and speak about that?
And by the way, I think, I think the next thing I said, that statement was obviously correct, 'cause it's out of the minutes, but I think the next thing I said was, we're not going back to the people to ask them to shell out more money, but we're taking it out of other, already-approved areas of our budget.
Absolutely, and you...
My, can, can I finish? So, my, what, what I was stating was, we need to be a little more transparent, I guess you'd say, and, and give people the list of, this is, this is what you're paying for, and this is where we're getting it from. So, just to clear that up, but Chief, go ahead.
John Alcindino, Fire Chief, if I may, can I answer two of Ms. Hillis' questions? One was in regards to the cell tower, the other one was in regards to the grants. When it came to the cell tower, the propose, proposal that came to the table, for it to go through, it would have to be a warrant article, the voters would've had to approve it. It was a time dilemma, 'cause the station was already being built, so we'd have to wait a whole calendar year for the grant for the tower, which would've made it 2019. I believe it's around the time that the voters had to approve it, and it wasn't worth risking not having communication, that's why I made the recommendation to do the cupola, to continue with the project, because the tower was a possibility of not happening. When it comes to the grants... When it comes to the grants, the, we have right now on the table a $302,000 grant that a resident called FEMA, and I received two calls last week from FEMA, and Mr. Foote received one call today, just so you know, from FEMA. The resident questioned the grants that the Fire Department had. At the time, there, there was discussion on what the priority was. Was the priority a $28,000 ventilation system? Or a $302,000 grant on SCBA's with about $30,000 of that for the SCBA system, for the, to go into the new fire station? Unfortunately, since that phone call was made, FEMA's response was, they're not gonna get in the middle of town politics. So unfortunately, the town could've just lost its 302,000, I think 200 and something thousand dollar grant, which again, I have the quote for the cascade system, which is the filling system for the new station. So that answered the two questions.
Are you stating that because somebody called FEMA, you're going to lose your SCBA?
No, Ms. Hillard, I-
All right, we said, this is gonna be a question and answer, we're not gonna have a debate. Let the Chief finish.
Okay, I can tell you, Mr. Donovan, FEMA has not got any grants except for that breathing apparatus, and that was last year that was not granted. The only thing that, the only grant that besides Larry's stuff that was submitted from Newton was for that breathing system, and nobody's heard on that yet.
Ms. Hillard, if I may, Ms. Hillard is 100% correct. We tried twice, we tried last year, we, unsuccessful. This year, what we did for the grant to make be more successful, which is public record, we asked for support from the Senator. You have a copy of that letter. We asked for support from Senator Shaheen. You have a copy of their email. There are, there is a grant, as we speak, which is public record, anybody's more than welcome to get a copy of it, where it's dated and signed from last month, with everything the Fire Department is asking for. And part of that is that SCBA syst, uh, cascade system for the new fire station. So if anyone is curious on if the Fire Department applied for a grant within the past 60 days, please see me, and I will give you a copy, you'll see the Board of Selectmen, 'cause the Board of Selectmen had to sign.
That's not the grant.
Chief, excuse me- We're not gonna go back and forth, we already explained that.
Chief, could you answer one question for me? What is an SCBA cascade system?
What it is, is the, we went for the package. Is the SCBA's are the tanks that the firefighters use to breathe in hazardous conditions. The current system is 23 years old. The current system expires in the middle of 2019, which means every single SCAPAC comes out of service. As it is, we have 14 SCBA's. So the Fire Chief made the decision on what the priority was. That's the priority that went to the feds for the grant, was for the SCBA's. There was no grant put in for the ventilation system, because the hope, the hope, was there was gonna be enough funds left in the project to be able to pay that $26,000 or $27,000 for the ventilation system. That's the reason this was discussed. That's the reason for why there is no grant for the exhaust system.
One more question. You mentioned the ventilation system and a grant.
Yes.
This is not to say we do not have a ventilation system.
You'd have to ask the project manager that question. That, that is under the building. All I'm here to say is the reason the Fire Department did not go for the small grant for the ventilation system, is because the Fire Chief made the decision to go for the big grant that was more of a priority.
Okay. Well, I, I just wanna make one statement, because I think, we've missed this throughout this whole project. As I remember, when I first got on the Board of Selectmen, I was in the building project for the fire station safety complex, which was 3.8 million or something like that, I believe, got voted down immediately. Then we went and had another Building Committee, and it got voted down again.
By the voters, right?
By the voters, right, by the voters. And if I'm, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that the Building Committee dropped this building down to $1.6 million, and it's never hidden that this was a bare bones building, no thrills included, to get the fire station built and to get the firemen out of the old station. I mean, I'm, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that's what we got, is a bare bones building that the people voted in, and we did get some extras, that people put in for us.
Mr. Chair, I just wanted to make a comment before it disappears completely. There was comments made about the tower that may or may not have generated income, but it's somebody who helped to complete the bond application. The bond application specifically stipulated that no part of this property could be rented out without regaining the bond. That is one of the other reasons that, not only did it have to become a warrant article, but if the town had actually voted to rent out the space for the tower, that it could've jeopardized our bond rating, therefore, we'd have still gotten the bond, though we'd have been paying probably another 3% to 4% in interest on it.
Okay.
The tower would've paid per year, which I believe is approximately $1,500, would've been wiped out by the interest payment that we would've made over the life of the bond.
Okay.
Mike? I just wanna add to what you said, the Chair said. Yeah, and again, there's a gentleman sitting in this audience that was on that committee, too. We took great care in getting this done as, as efficiently and inexpensively as we could to the taxpayers in this town. So much so, that we took doors and windows out of the building. So if we went to the efforts of reducing this price as much as possible, and we went to doors and windows, we went right to bare bones. Bare bones.
Mike, can you speak to the ventilation?
I can. Again, to add to what the Chief said, during the budget session with the Building Committee, it was talked about that grants were available for the Plimea Vent, Mega Vent, or Airhawk systems. They're all pretty much the same, Airhawk is a system that hoses do not attach to the trucks. Probably the most efficient in this building, 'cause you can change the configuration of where the trucks go, and you don't have to have somebody come in and relocate hoses. So where grants were available, the grants would not be available until the station was built and completed. They're not gonna give you a grant for a station that might be imaginary. So the grant wasn't gonna be available till the station was built. We put a ventilation system in the apparatus bay that meets the mechanical code, the code for exchange rate and CFMs. What we didn't put in, and we can add to it very easily, is a CO2 sensor. Right now, that's on a switch. You go over, when the guys get called out, they can flick the switch on. It was actually changed through the recommendation, which we're making a few minor changes, and this isn't uncommon. We build a building, you build a house, the owners move in, they have nuances that they want as their operations come in, and there's punch lists that aren't unusual, and we've been working on them for a while. So we've changed that to a timer, because unfortunately, the Fire Department shows up and is part of the, they're leaving to respond to an incident. They really don't pay much attention if the garage doors are left open, or that ventilation fan stays on. So it's gone on a timer. And the exchange rate, based upon the mechanical code, that fan exceeds the mechanical code exchange rate for CFMs in that apparatus bay. I don't know if that answered the question?
It does.
Okay.
Okay, does anybody else have any questions?
Brenner Drive, New Hampshire. I got two questions, if I could bring it up real quick. Two questions, is the Fire Chief said he didn't have any say in the budget, but yet he spent money for the COOPLA and everything else to authorize that payment. I have a little concern.
He did not authorize that payment, the Board of Selectmen authorized that payment.
Thank you. The Fire Chief actually recommended the COOPLA, because it was less expensive than putting a regular tower on.
I'm just concerned.
So I apologize for recommending the less cost.
So- I apologize. About the ventilation system, I just, I have a quick thing about this. I read the code on this, I think the station looks great, Mike, I'm not trying to talk any bad, but... According to International Mechanical Code, and that's what New Hampshire Fire, New Hampshire falls on, enclosed parking garages. I wanna read the code, you guys determine it, interpret it however you feel. Enclosed parking garage, mechanical ventilation shift systems for enclosed parking garage shall be permitted to operate intermittently where the system is arranged to operate automatically when a detection of a vehicle operating or the presence of occupants by an approved automatic detection device. So, a switch, a timer, it's not in the code.
Mike?
I'm up.
You wanna answer to it?
I think I'm gonna be up quite a bit. Rich is correct, he didn't make that up, he read it out of the code book. We put it on a timer, because we were still, and are still hoping, to get a venting system in there. We can avoid that, I can put that on a CO2 sensor, which makes that completely compliant with that book, which we'll do tomorrow. But what that does, and I don't care. I am, I'm a builder, I'm not the owner. The Board, the five people there are sitting in front of me are the owner, you are the owner's representatives. I can put a CO2 sensor on that, which makes that compliant, so if the levels go up in that garage, that'll come on automatically, not a problem. How do you read the code?
On detection of vehicle operation, not level to CO.
Well, then that code is behind the times, because you're new tanker? You're, Rich, you're new tanker?
I'm just going by the code.
Okay, well, hear me out, and I'll answer why, why it's behind the times. Anything with a DEF system in it, you're familiar with the DEF system, right? Any truck, which your tanker is a DEF system truck, does not need any ventilation, meaning by code, that could run in a building forever, and you don't need a ventilation system. So much so, that the Mercedes dealers-
I'm not here to argue with you, I'm just-
I'm, I'm answering your question. So much so, that the DEF system, Mercedes Benz will show you in a DEF system that they'll drink the water out of the exhaust system. I think they're foolish, but salesmen do it.
Does Mercedes-Benz supersede the international chemical code?
All right, hold on.
I can't answer that question, I can just tell you, the new DEF system trucks do not need a ventilation system.
Okay.
I'm, I'm still in the ventilation system-
All right, that's fine. Ron, can you bring any light to this subject?
And my only concern is, we left the building with a fan on the wall, and now we have a new building, and we have a fan on the wall. That's my only concern. We have cancer in the apartment and everything else. But that's a legitimate concern, I'm not blocking that down.
All right, guys, we're not gonna go back and forth, you ask the question, we'll get the answer.
Ron Lemire, Chief Building Inspector. There was some discussion on the ventilation for that apparatus bay. We do have a ventilation fan that is located in that, in that bay. Mike is correct, is correct as to what we have there for a system. When we're looking at the application of a ventilation system for that, we're talking about two means of ventilation. One, a mechanical ventilation system, and a source capture system. Source capture system, there are some exceptions to source capture, depending on, on what we have in there for apparatus, the time that it's operating, whether we have an in and out of vehicles. That's part of the things that we need to look at also. When making the determination for mechanical ventilation, we have to look at the natural ventilation, the overhead doors, the size of the overhead doors, the openings, the size of the fan that is, that is in that bay. The code has, yeah, the code has some specific language for that. It'll come out of Chapter 4 for ventilation. Chapter 4 will refer you to Chapter 5 for its guidelines. And from there, you have to make a determina, determination as to what we can use for natural ventilation, and what we use for mechanical means. That is done, those decisions are made by both the code official and the engineer, who's, who's designed the size of that fan. So when we go into, to Chapter 5, we're gonna talk about, yeah, basically, in Chapter 50214, and this just goes back to source capture. In areas where motor vehicles operate, mechanical ventilation, as the gentleman said, shall be provided in accordance with Section 403. Additionally, areas in which stationary motor vehicles are operated shall provide with a source capture system that connects directly to the motor vehicle exhaust systems. And there are exceptions to that. The section shall not apply to motor vehicle service areas where engines are operated inside the building only for the duration necessary to move the motor vehicle in and out of the building. So that exception would say, reading this code, that you don't necessarily need source capture. So we can take that out of, take that out of the equation.
I, I know.
Yeah, so when we get into the mechanical vent, so, it, the commentary section of Chapter 5 goes into explaining as to what the code gurus, officials were thinking when they were writing this language. And they go on to say that, um, a number of repair garages, and they're just using repair garages, 'cause that's what the language is, is referring to, whether it's a repair garage, parking garage, an apparatus bay, 'cause they don't specifically call out an apparatus bay. They're mainly talking about what we call parking garages. A number of repair garages have large overhead doors to permit the movement of vehicles in and out of service area. Because of the size of the overhead doors, these spaces usually meet the requirements for natural ventilation requirements in Section, in Chapter 4 of the code. And except, and it goes on, is as stated in Exception 3, that I just read to you about the capture systems, those areas where motor vehicles operate include, include repair garages where the vehicle is driven into a service bay for routine maintenance and repair services that do not require the running of an engine. So when we're looking at that ventilation, we have to, again, take in the, what we have available for natural air, what we have available for mechanical air, and make sure that calculation is correct for, for that bay. There is... The, Chapter 4 has, has one section in the commentary, when it talks about mechanical exhaust systems. In the commentary section, it says, "The application of this section requires the judgment of the designer and the code official on a case-by-case basis." Chapter 5 also prescribes ventilation design for special areas as listed. So what was done on this project was, we had looked at this application for what we had available, and that was a decision that was made to maintain a level of ventilation for that, for that garage. Because the code does allow us the exception to put that capture system aside, that's a totally separate system, it's a totally separate use. You got it, no, that's okay.
Occupied spaces accessory to public garages, connecting offices, waiting rooms, ticket booths, and similar uses that have accessory to public, accessory to public garages shall be maintained at a positive pressure, and shall be provided ventilation in accordance with Section 403 dot 3.
Section you're reading from?
404 dot 3.
404 dot 3, title?
Enclosed parking garages. My, my concern is the office space should have positive pressure, so these will be-
The, right, and, and the system, the system that was designed there, there are- And the system, the system that was designed there, there are completing balancing reports for us as part of our final inspections as we bring the building to its final occupancy. So, when those final debt are provided to me, we'll be able to ensure that we do have a positive there. So that when we do open that door to the apparatus bay, we are not moving any of those fumes into that occupied space.
Is there one question?
Okay. Does anybody else have any questions?
Mr. Chair?
Yep.
If I may, Mr. Dupree brought up a good point when he talked about the old fire station over the exhaust system. The main reason, and I was one of them, so was Chief Ingalls and many other individuals to push the members out of there, is mostly because the makeup air for the heating system, I'm sorry, yeah, the makeup air for the heating system was in the apparatus bay. So whenever the trucks fired up, the exhaust would be getting into the heating system and blowing around the entire station. And Mr. Dupree is 100% correct in regards to, we do have an individual, a captain, who unfortunately is, was diagnosed with cancer. And the Board is aware, and I'm sure other people are not aware, that I would not jeopardize the members. I put my family through six to seven weeks of living you-know-what, going through, having biopsies done, blood work done and everything else because we thought we had cancer. Okay? So, I just want to clear that up. When it comes to the exhaust system, we relied on the experts to tell us that our members were safe. That's why we pushed to move in there.
Okay. Do you have a question?
Hi, Jamie Fitzpatrick, Walnut Farm. The details that are going around, I don't have any knowledge or experience on the details. If I can just try to take it all above and understanding what's really happening. According to the handout, the total budget's $1.7 million. Mike indicated you still have $200,000 in kitty. Currently, we're running under budget, the $200,000, so we're at $1.5 million. How much additional money is estimated that is needed to complete the project? And what are the total expenditures of the projects, including any transfer of funds? And that's really, would help understand from a community perspective. All of this is set in on, is we're still at the budget level and the details, we really be up to the contractor and the selectman to do. I still don't have a good feel for where we are on the project.
Well, I don't really...
You guys want to answer? You guys can answer.
You want to take it up?
Well, I mean, I think we need a couple of, I appreciate all this.
I can answer the transfer of funds from the fire department into the new station. The fire department, the funds that went for certain things for the new fire station is coming back to the fire department's budget through the grants that Mr. Foot received.
Okay.
That's one. And Mike can...
Let me ask, you know, to Jamie's question directly, because it's a valid question. Again, there's 200, and I said the number a few minutes ago, $1,000 left on the budget right now. I cannot stand here and tell you because you, the Board, has hired a engineer to do a complete design of the fire station that will be approved by the state. He's working on it. Don't know what that's going to cost. I wish I could answer that question directly, but I don't know because it wasn't part of the original project. I will throw this in there, and I don't know where it's going to go. The town of Plastow graciously has offered us a diesel pump that they no longer use because the chief there heard that we're in a predicament here based upon how this thing has progressed. The engineer you guys hired is doing a review of that pump to see if the curve in the pump and everything will work in our application. I hope it does because that will save us significant cost in getting this thing done. But other than that, I can't tell you what that system, because again, it wasn't, for lack of a better word, under my watch. This has come up because of a situation out of my control. Again, I was hired very specifically to keep this thing under budget, and I've done that right up to this moment.
So, I guess the simple answer to Jamie's, Jamie's question is, as Mike said, we're currently, as we sit here tonight, we're under budget. The engineer that's drawing up the plans for the sprinkler system, we believe that two and change will be more than enough to cover that. The plan is still like halfway developed, and we'll have that at future meetings for people to come and ask questions and review. But, we don't anticipate, I mean, the voters, the thing is, the voters set the budget for this, and we've remained under the budget. And, in a sense, we can't go over budget, right? There's a bond. They voted for that. They voted for the plan. The plan is, you know, some minor tweaks here in any construction project, but we didn't, we didn't add anything to the original plan. Correct me if I'm wrong, Mike. We didn't put an addition on? We didn't...
No, no. To that sketch that's, that Board that's up there right now?
The original proposal that went to the voters.
Which is that? Which is that, right up there?
Yeah.
No, we've built it, you know, we changed a few things that were more beneficial. I mean, I worked with the fire chief on this. The doors on that sketch right there, which were the original budget doors, were a plain cheap door.
Yeah.
After working with, again, the architect and the fire chief, we went to a better door. It's a door that has radiant panels in it, so that you're getting the benefit of that all year round. Anybody, guys that are operating here, that are in that fire department, you can go in that fire department all day and don't have to turn a light on. So we looked at things that were made more cost-effective to operate that, all around, through the whole project. But that's just one of the things. So, if you, if you take that picture right there and transfer that to 8 Merrimack Road, that's what's up at 8 Merrimack Road.
I have a question for you, Mike, because I know I've heard about it. Back parking lot of the fire station, it's gravel, compressed gravel. Is that ever on the plan and supposed to be paved?
No. No, that was never, from day one, it was never paved. And actually, after a review from the state, Dennis Quintel did the civil analysis, he did the original drawings, and then we had a file for an alteration of terrain permit. You guys remember, there was a delay. Matt, you actually called and we expedited it. In that, the back part of the parking lot was never to be paved. It was to be gravel, same as it is now, and the same as those drawings that go back three years ago. Two reasons. One, cost. Second of all, impervious surface. If we paved that entire parking lot, the entire drainage for that that was approved by the state would have to be altered and changed for more money. Did I answer that question?
Yeah, that answers it. Anybody else have any questions? Okay.
Jim Baker, Red River. Man, I just want a clarification. When you said that the person who was hired to get the state approval to do the drawings and the design, you were talking about getting the state approval within the $200,000. You're talking about including what needs to be done, not just the design, I assume, right?
Yeah, the whole, the whole plan, the whole, the whole sub-project, if you will, the remediation plan, so.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions?
And as, as Mike said, if, if it works out with the Plastow donation, then that will reduce that significantly.
Okay.
Hi, Annie Collier, One Ridge Road. I have to confess, I was getting kind of lost on this $300, $2,000 grant that somebody called on who was a resident and apparently messed up. I'm a little confused what it was for and what it means as far as being messed up for us, that we're not going to get this $300, $2,000. I'd like a clarification.
If I'm, I didn't, it didn't, it, I don't know if it messed up anything. All I do know is when I received the two phone calls, the last remark that I received was FEMA does not get into town politics. That is it. Okay? The, again...
It actually has nothing to do with it.
Well, the, the grant, as the project manager put it, the exhaust system, we relied on the experts. We had in front of us, as Mike put it, you can't apply for a grant unless you have a building. We have a building. We just finished writing the grant for what I felt was the priority. The priority, what I felt, because the experts said that the members are safe in the fire station with the exhaust system. The priority, I'll take the hit on it, was we need SCBAs, the packs that are on the individuals' backs. That was a priority, especially since they came down this year and did the test, and we lost 14 bottles. We have 10 bottles on loaner. That's the priority. Right in that grant for the SCBA, we put in a section for the compressor, the filling bottles, and what they call the cascade system, it's the vault, all the electrical work and the installation for the units, it's three units total, to go into the new fire station. That was part. At no point in time did anybody ever talk that the town was going to put that unit in. Right now, we have to go to Plastow, Keen's, then we have to go someplace else to fill the bottles. That's why I took it, and that's the grant that I wrote. I'm not saying the phone call did anything. I'm just saying, I've been in the fire service since 1979 and talking to the individuals from FEMA, they've never had a resident call them and question a grant. Normally, you go to the fire department when it's in assistance to firefighter grant, you go to the selectman, you go to the mayor, you go to the city council, you go to someone you don't call them direct. That's all I'm saying. I was blindsided. I wish, the information's all public record, I'm not going to stand up here and say, I wish the individual would have just came and asked a simple question. All the questions that everybody has asked are legitimate questions. Mike is down, usually at, in the project manager's office. I'm in the station. The Board is here every two weeks. If anybody has any questions, just need to ask. That's, and I'm sure I'm speaking for Mike, I'm sure I'm speaking for Larry through his grants, and I'm sure I'm speaking for the Board. Just need to ask. But, for my half, like I said, I'm just the fire chief. I relied on the experts on a lot of things.
Thank you. Stop it.
All right. Thank you, Chris. Anybody else have any questions? Okay, Laura?
I just want to...
You need to do it on the microphone, please.
Have you ever heard of Brentwood, New Hampshire, and the fire department?
I...
Their sprinkler system? And do you remember a conversation with me over a year ago about how they had the same exact problem?
I, I'll be, hang on. I don't remember the conversation with you a year ago, and the issue that I heard when I became chief with Brentwood was in regards to the EOC. I just learned from the town's engineer, the fire protection engineer that the town just hired, that there was an issue again with the sprinkler system.
I believe Brentwood didn't even put one in, is what I heard.
Brentwood, you're 100% correct. Brentwood, and actually this, close to the sister station that the committee wouldn't look at, that is sitting right there, they actually never even put a sprinkler system in the building.
Right, that's what I heard.
This building right here that you're looking at, the administrative section, is, I believe it's a 13D, if you go there right now and break a sprinkler head, you're going to get wet. There's a 12,000 gallons of stern in the ground. The difference between a lot of other fire departments, and we'll use Brentwood, that I learned, Brentwood, they didn't even have a pipe attached, where Newton has the system, I don't even know how far it is, but it's pretty much in place. The administrative side is done, it's operative. All the piping is in, the fire department connections are in, the risers are in. All that I was told by the engineer is he's just going to review, make sure it is proper from the first engineer that designed the system. Probably going to have to add another tank in the ground in the fire pump. But the main, Newton is totally different than other departments. Like I said, I don't remember what department was, was, that we went to go look at.
Nottingham.
Nottingham, thank you, Jim. They don't need, they're now putting a sprinkler system in. They had zero. I didn't know about Brentwood other than the EOC issues.
I remember Brentwood was all over the news because they forgot to put the system in at all.
Correct. And we have the system in.
Right.
We have the system in, the system just has to get finished.
Okay.
Yeah, let me just add to the sprinkler system. The chief covered most of it right now, but to clarify it in simple terms, inside the footprint of the building, all the piping and mechanical is done to code. Yeah. The company that's been hired, that you guys hired, is going to come in and do a review of it. But all of it is to code. The issue is not within the footprint of the building. The issue is supply to the sprinkler system in the building, which is quantity of water and pressure. That's the issue. Not inside, there's, and be honest with you, because of the way we designed the system in conjunction with the local authority, we accidentally end up with a better long-term goal because between the administrative area and the apparatus bay, there's a three-hour firewall. We would not need that three-hour firewall if we originally had enough water and pressure. So we got a wet system like the chief said in the apparatus bay. You trip ahead right now, you're going to get wet.
That's in your office.
It's not to code, it's been not to code since the plans were printed, right? It says right on it, not NFPA 13 approved, right? Why would that system stop? That's the problem.
You know, you probably should have sat on the building committee.
I actually couldn't because my county fire chief wouldn't allow it, so...
All right. All right. Meeting is over. We're done. We're going to start getting personal, meeting's over, we're going to move on to the next line item.
We have other...
We have other business on tonight's meeting. We're not getting personal. I told you that from the beginning. We're done. All right.
Well, discussion...
What's the matter?
I have another project to discuss.
Would you, all right, hold on. I want to answer to that before you leave.
Go ahead.
Okay. So let everybody know, because I know it's been on Facebook, that a selectman worked on the project. I did work on the project. I had some slow time where I could have gone and worked for any other company. Let me finish, please. You ask a question, I want to answer. So I have this out in the open. I worked, I talked to Mike, I said, "Listen, I got some slow time. If you want some help, I can come help you close the building so you can get heat in there," or I would go somewhere else to work. I went to work for Mike's company, not the town. I worked for Mike under two, less than two-thirds of my regular income to try and give the town a break on labor. I worked for two days. And guess what? Because of you, I will not ever do that again. Full price for the town if I do anything, because of people like you, nobody, myself and a lot of other people do not want to do anything. So let's end this meeting now. Let's move on.
Discussion, not the meeting.
All right. Let's move on.
Change the people who are here to speak.
What's that?
Change the people who are here...
I guess, I get this.
Okay, go ahead. Because I'm going to lose, I'm going to, I forgot it.
So, obviously, we're going to continue with the published agenda, so if people were only here for the fire station, you can obviously leave. But before people do, can I get...
Any?
Can I get the floor?
Any?
Sorry. So, I just want to say to the, to the contractors and fire chief, I, where's the fire chief? Did he leave?
No, he's in the back.
Oh, he's in the back. So, hopefully, hopefully I'm not signing you up for something you don't want to do, but if people haven't yet seen the new station, they can give you a call during business hours, right? And you'll show, we don't want, we don't want 100 people at the same time, but I'm sure you'll walk people around, right? So they can see it?
There will be as soon as it's officially completed.
If I may, I know Ms. Hill had left, the one good thing with, where is it? The Facebook fashion. We've had several town residents come in, we've had fire chiefs, we actually had, the fire station had its first CCO's chief's breakfast there last Thursday. I won't speak for Mike. Mike's had fire chiefs approach him, he's had residents approach... him on how ecstatic they are at what they're seeing. The door is open, the members are there, my phone, you have my email, you have my phone, call me, somebody wants a personal tour of the station, we'll show them the sprinkler system.
Toys for Tots.
The door's open.
Toys for Tots is what...
Toys for Tots there, and the jolly, matter of fact, somebody stopped in today and dropped off a bunch of stuff for Toys for Tots.
And, and the only other thing is, Nancy, the town report, right, is you're starting to put that together, so this, the fire station items will be in the town report if people wanna review those, right?
Just want to be clear, it is unanimous decision that that's moving on for one outburst for Earth, the entire board agrees that...
What's moving on for what again? Can you repeat that?
I wanna make sure that it's clear that it's a board decision to move on from that discussion we were just having about the fire station for one outburst. You've got people here, the, the families, tonight, to be here to discuss this, it is the five years decision to end that discussion for one outburst. I wanna be crystal clear.
All right, and I will be crystal clear as well. The outburst was from somebody who has already asked a question, and was on their second question, and finished their second question. Every member of this audience has had the opportunity to say if they had a question and to approach, and that was prior to someone coming back up to ask another question. So yes, everyone has had a chance to speak. If there is anyone...
It ended pretty quickly, so it's...
If anyone has a question...
Well, we've asked multiple times, any other questions? The only one that stepped up...
You ended as soon as you had an outburst.
No, we have asked multiple times...
Two, three, four, there's one you have...
Let them ask their questions.
Okay, well, those people...
I think it's fair for a governing body to shut down the...
It is fair for a government body to shut down public comments to maintain order.
I agree.
Thank you, and that is what we did.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to allow the rest of the questions to be made.
I'll second that, that's fine, as long as...
Yeah, no motions needed for that.
I wanna give them the opportunity to ask it.
Yeah, I'm just saying, we don't need a, we, we don't need a motion, we can, we can be in agreement without motioning.
And that's fine, because we've asked multiple times if there's any other questions, the only one that stepped up was the female that we had a discussion with, so. And I wanna make, on TV, I wanna make an apology for my outburst, that comment has been brought up on three other meetings and has been answered three times, the same exact way. So it's just, I'm getting tired of being thrown under the bus by one person or that question, which has been answered multiple times. So I apologize for my outburst. Okay, anybody else have any other questions? Okay?
Ladies and gentlemen?
Okay, how you doing?
My name's Craig Walker. Quaker Street. The reason I'm raising my hand now, not earlier, is Mike didn't have a chance to answer the last question, it was raised during the outburst, and he might have a great answer, he might have a terrible answer, but I think we should get an answer. You were asked a question about, I think it was that the sprinkler system or the drawings said that it didn't need to serve, and I think you had an answer, you were ready to respond. I'd like to hear what it is.
I can answer that, yeah, and actually, the set of drawings is sitting right there in that pile, that's all the drawings for the job. Because it was a, a request for a waiver, and again, that's always been the case from way back in the budget sessions, where it's a waiver situation, the drawings that the mechanical sprinkler guy put together drew it, drew everything inside the building, so it's approved by code. The, the lack of it is the supply of water and the pressure of water. So on those drawings, the sprinkler engineer cannot approve that and say it's NFPA approved, because it doesn't have the supply of water to feed the sprinkler heads. Other than that, again, everything that's in the building is an approved sprinkler system, meets all the codes, it's just we don't have the supply of water to meet NFPA.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Uh, can I, uh, excuse me? I just, one question I have, and I thought it was a really long, I thought it was 88 compliance, this is building 88 compliant, or...
There's still another review that needs to be done to make it 100% 88 required, I think, and I can't speak from, is that part of the inspection?
Thursday night.
Thursday night? It is. So, when the local authorities review it, it should be. There were some things that were interpreted differently, and that was clarified, and all the modifications that were made.
I just make one follow-up comment. I would interrupt, you know, like, Monday morning quarterback, it's our next, it happens to me all the time.
Yeah?
But it was all about communication, it was, let's say, all the communication would've probably helped us. I just think we all learned a lesson maybe.
Yeah, the only thing I'll say about that is, you're, you're probably right, we could've communicated better, we don't do this every day. This is the first time in 50 years, and I don't intend to be here for the next building, but, but the, you know, the, the public kinda sets our level of communication in these meetings. We have a long agenda, we do it at kinda the executive-level briefing, you know? If people are in here and they ask questions, we go into more detail. We, the thing we're probably guilty of is at a board, as a board, is we're briefed for different things throughout the week, and we probably have those in our heads, so we already know, you know, X, Y, Z, so we might not think to bring it up, but I've heard several members here during meetings, we try to, if we catch something, and we say, oh yeah, we need to explain that a little better in case somebody's on TV and they don't know what we're talking about, we try to do that. But I will, I will kind of agree with you on that point, is we maybe learned a little bit of a lesson about better communication. I think we tried to communicate by having it on the agenda for every meeting, but we probably could've done better, you know?
And most of the time, I'm a little early, I don't know what to ask, and I don't think it's the public's responsibility to ask for being made, or layer of changes, or initiatives or trends, and all that, God damn, I'm working on, and it was a benefit.
I don't know if it would have, yeah.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else have any questions?
If I may make a comment?
No. Chief?
You can end it, and I'll wait my call. That way, if you need...
You have one more question right here.
Tom Coody, are you a fire marshal in New Hampshire? You're the dean of all right? I just wonder why people can't work together, do it with this whole town. I appreciate what you did, keeping it on, I appreciate what Mike's done, the chief's done, all you people. You all worked to your best to capability, just not make it wrong. I just wanna thank you all, but I...
Appreciate it.
I wonder why we can't work together.
We try.
Try.
Because we're human beings.
But I do appreciate what you people do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Company also.
Okay, thanks. Okay, anybody else have any questions? Last call. Okay, Chief, you have one last comment?
Just, tonight got a little heated, a couple of things. One, just so the public is aware, and the board already knows, an email was sent to the fire marshal's office, the marshal has requested a meeting.
Right, we don't need to know the date and time.
Correct, I'm just letting you know that the emails that were sent are also public record. If anybody has any questions on the fire department's half for the station, please contact me. The important thing, 'cause I had my little speech set, and then this just, the big, I know Mike has, and Mike's crew was out there in blizzards and in weather, working, just a few people, on behalf of the fire department, we'd like to thank Walmart from Plastow for the gracious extreme discount for the televisions, the four TVs in the fire station. We'd like to thank Mike Adams Electric, Mike donated all the HDMI cables that run through the entire fire station. I know I'm gonna miss people, so forgive me. Todd from TCS Communication, he donated both radio consoles for the EOC and dispatch. Uh, I know I'm gonna forget. Eastern Seaboard, I know he's taken a hit today, but when anybody comes and looks at the fire station, if they look at the woodwork, all the woodwork was donated, the labor and materials was all donated by Eastern Seaboard, I think I'm gonna say that right. North Shore Bank for their gracious donation on the flagpole and flag. Kelly Davis, who's gonna be donating the plaque for the fire station when the fire station is done, and Table, Kingston Police for the donation of some of the furniture, and the list goes on and on. I, I think people just have to understand, there was a lot of individuals that have donated time and money to get this project to where it is. That's all. And let's not forget, sorry, the committees, the multiple committees that were there, the past and present members who stood out and pushed for the fire station because they knew there was a need. There's a lot of thank yous that need to go out, and I thank you for bringing that up, and I appreciate it.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Donated that sermon, did you, did I go back and do say, do this happen?
Chief?
I, I, oh, just that...
Simon up on the bank, and probably donated the fish that, that one passed away.
That, unfortunately, right now, we had to hire a new HVAC individual to finish the, we're kinda losing volunteers. I have to approach the board because the contractor that was providing the equipment and manpower to move the firefighter memorial stone doesn't wanna touch this fire department with a 10-foot pole. We just hired another HVAC guy to do the dryer. The contractor that was volunteering to laser and put down markings inside the apparatus bay for the trucks to line up, he doesn't wanna get involved. We're losing contractors. So to answer your question, unless somebody wants to come forward and volunteer, we were hoping the contractor that did the memorial would do something with the old flagpole and do something with the siren. Unless somebody's gonna step up with a crane, it's gonna be up to the board, 'cause we're running out of contractors. We're running out of people that wanna even work on this project.
And running out of money.
I can't blame them. I think they're easily at it.
Okay, anybody else have any other questions before we close this section?
I just wanted to comment. I've actually worked in building, public buildings in this town before. I've never seen this kind of animosity brought up. But one thing I can tell you, right at the moment, I'm thoroughly disgusted that we and probably will lose our FEMA grant for the replacement, I call them Scott Packs, I know they have cantina nipples nowadays. One of the things that I could tell you in advance is that, and the board has on many occasion, you get positive letters to go with your grants. There is so little grant money out there that they look for any excuse to kill an application. If somebody made a call to FEMA and sent them, now, I'm no longer on most Facebook pages, but if somebody sent them a copy of, well, some of the stuff I saw on Facebook, that would give FEMA an excuse to go Newton and draw a line right through it. So whoever made that call, I don't know who it is, but they cost the town $300,000 and put not only the budget at stake, but they removed the life-saving app, the life safety apparatus from the police, from the fire department, that the town will now have to pay to get. And that really, I'm a gentleman, so I can't use that kind of language, but it, it really irritates me that I suspect that FEMA has already crossed us off the list.
What I...
And I, I, it's just, I've been sitting here frustrating since I heard that this evening.
I would prefer to cross that bridge when we come to it and hope for the best.
What, what I can tell you is, I had a gentleman today, just now, before he left, give me some great advice, first thing tomorrow morning, I will call the state reps liaison that responds, I will call the senators liaison that sent the letter to the town, the same letter that was sent from the senator to FEMA. I, I'm frustrated too. I'm frustrated too, because what was neglected to say, that AFG grant has been around probably since 2002, and the young lady was right, she was off and right. Newton applied in 2017 for that grant. That grant has been around since 2002. Newton applied for that grant, not the fire chief, Newton. The town busted its behind to get letters of support for the grant. It's not my grant, that's not my fire station, I'm sorry, just as you're frustrated, I'm frustrated of hearing it's your station, that's not my station, that's the town station, that's the taxpayer station. That grant is the taxpayer station. Just like everybody, I don't wanna say everybody, there were people that are trying to point fingers here and there. I just, the only reason I brought it up, I wanna make it clear, that if we don't get the grant, I have no choice but to put a warrant article. That's my job, okay? I have to put a warrant article in. Not saying the board's gonna approve it, I can stand here today and tell you, I doubt if the voters are gonna vote for it. All I'm saying is, I did my job. That's what I was hired for, I did my job. I can prove it, it's public record that I wrote a grant.
Before you step away, I just wanna ask...
Go ahead.
Ryan Higgins, 23, Frank Ross Road. It's been identified since 2017 at least...
At least, yes, sir.
That the SCBA's are expiring until 2019.
Negative. When we became chief, it was one of the punch lists. They're 23, which you know, ex-member, they're 23 years old, the dates are on the bottles from the last time they were hired or tested, the 15-year mark is 2019. What we have done, from what we were advised to do, per FEMA for the grant, we can only repair them, that if we replace any part of what we're asking for, for the grant, it could jeopardize the grant. That's why we haven't done it.
My next question is, it's been identified that they're approaching an expiration date through testing, through systems of process, through NFPA compliance, and things like that. Why hasn't a capital reserve fund been put in place for an out...
There actually has been. Since I've been chief, the first year, the board decided to go for a tanker. The second year I was here, the board decided to go for a new station. Third year I was here, the board decided to go for a fire station. Last year, the fire chief put $50,000 into the capital reserve.
For specifically for a SCBA...
For anything that was needed, yes, sir. And we also put in our budget for last year, and this year, you will see a line item in there for grant match.
Okay, one clarification. The board decided to go for the tanker, the board decided to go for the station...
Everybody, I apologize, everybody decided.
And the board decided to go for the $50,000 in that fund.
Correct.
Thank you.
Correct. Nothing, the fire department, we don't have a magical warrant, the board has to prove it.
I, I just wanted to make sure we were, you know, consistent in decisions.
You have, you have been consistent.
But we have done it based on recommendations...
Exactly.
From the people who know such as yourself.
One other question that, related, or Mike might be able to answer as well, gear in the pictures that are on this website and social media, they're all in the apparatus bay.
Yep.
I know that included in the exhaust, you know, DPM rules, systems, yeah, and like that. What about with the new doors, light exposure, and like that? Is that unaddressed? Is there, is there a room identified in the building that...
There isn't. That's a valid question, 'cause a lot of the new stations have a gear locker room. Again, due to budget restrictions, and I'm not hiding anything, you can go up there and look at the footprint of that building, it's exactly what we have up there. I can't speak direct, I'm not a fireman, you guys know that. So what your turnout gear is exposed to, I built it the way that your own shows. You know what I mean?
Just so you know, to answer your question, and to add on to it, the original plan was on, the way the building is, side seat, west side of the building, that's where the gear racks were going to be. When the doors had more glass on them, the decision was made, instead of having them lined up against that rack, against there, put them behind the trucks, put them on wheels, get them away from the sun, put them in the center of the station. That was the thought, and we also put the thought into getting covers that go over the gear racks. But that's one, I understand the sun half now. But we did move the gear racks from where the original plan was.
Any other questions? Okay.
I think where the confusion comes from us as a public is, we were sold a new fire station. What Mike Pavillo built was a closed parking garage with a gas office. So I think that's how people will look in, well, they'll look for a new fire station and NFA compliant, which I know those are suggestions, but I think that's where the confusion comes.
I will, I will say that if you look at that drawing.
I totally agree.
So. Only because you said the comment is, your comment is, is people were sold on a fire station and got a garage with offices. That is the fire station that we, but it is the one we sold them on. That's the one they agreed would be good for them.
Right, and what I'm saying is, when people look at fire stations, they see the pants, they see the separate gear rooms, they see all this stuff, and that's where the confusion comes.
Well, nothing was hidden, it's right there on the print.
No, no, I know, I'm saying nothing, I'm not saying anything was hidden, but I'm saying I would be under the impression that we would be getting vehicle tanks. I'll be honest with you, I'm confused.
I can only reiterate one last time that people did not want the town to spend three, four, five, six million dollars on a fire station. So if I may finish, please. Thank you. The townspeople, the voters, the taxpayers did not want the town to spend three, four, five, six million dollars on a fire station, like Amesbury is proposing, Plastow just recently put a couple million dollars on in addition, et cetera. They did not want us to do that.
A couple million dollars? Plastow? Seven.
Well, that's a couple, right?
What was it? Thank you.
Okay, now, what we did was we designed, and we were very open about this, it is a bare bones, no frills, what we need, necessity only. There are nice to haves. What we have is what was needed, the bare bones minimum of what was needed to get us out of the old station and into a new one. That's how we came up with a $1.7 million price tag, by not putting in these lovely gear rooms and these fully automated exhausts, et cetera. Yes, there's all kinds of things we could have put in there, but it would have, but it also would have raised the price tag and caused the warrant article to fail.
I think we've spent a lot of time on this tonight.
What's that?
We're good. Don't, don't let him, we're done. Can we move on?
Any other questions on the fire station building?
I think we need to leave this topic.
Yes, we are done.
We're going to continue on our agenda, and we're going to move to.
I suggest a five and a break, so that people have a chance to leave without disturbing the camera and what people at home see.
All right.
As long as the board doesn't move the table.
Actually, that'll give me a moment.
We might be ending this meeting at like 10:30, so if you don't want to be here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night, Tom.
Good night, Joe.
Okay, do we need to talk about the fire pumps? Since it's already been discussed?
No.
Okay, we're going to move to line B, 2019 budget review, Highway Department.
Mike Pavilla, Road Agent Newton, you've got all of the worksheets from the prior meeting?
I do.
I sadly stand here with none of them. But you see how I submitted it? It's no different change for the past 10 years. Maybe 11 years.
Silly question, was it last year that the governor gave us the, was it, what did we end up with?
It was the whole state, and it was last year.
Right.
It was the additional highway block grant.
Right.
Which has nothing to do with the budget.
Right, I know, but what did we end up doing with that? Have we expended that yet?
Well, all of the highway block grant money that comes in yearly.
Yep.
We set up, I say we, the body, a number of years ago, put it all into an account.
Right.
I don't know what it's labeled Nancy, but there's an account that Kim has. So it goes into a pool, and I have, since I became road agent, I hold a year and a half in reserve. So how that cycles out, I'm not sure what year we're in because Kim holds it, but I always leave enough for a year and a half if something catastrophic comes up. We have money, not out of the taxpayers, but out of the highway block grant to cover something of an unforeseen situation.
Okay, because I know there were restrictions in how we could spend it, so...
Like every highway block grant.
Right.
It can only be used for road, construction, anything along those lines.
Okay, so it's there for a rainy day?
Well, I think the money, the extra money was for a year. You had to spend that first, correct?
Yeah, which Kim knew. Kim knew the rules of reg, so she would have spent out of that.
I think that was a question.
She already spent it, but it offset based on...
Yeah, from another year.
Yep. All right, well, I move to accept the proposed highway budget into the draft town budget.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
If you flip the pages, Tree Warden.
I believe it was already discussed during the meeting earlier, that it was being donated.
It's being examined to determine whether or not it will fit our needs. So we will be getting another follow-up probably at our next meeting as to whether or not it will. And we did hear that from our construction manager earlier this evening.
You want to let it die? Are you saying die, or do you want me to address the question?
I think I just addressed it.
I didn't, I was thinking, I know I've been living in a warehouse for 10 years, not concerned with my concerns, but how much money we're going to end up spending, something that will go back.
Wait a minute, let Mike answer.
That's being investigated at this point.
All right, Mike's been working with it. We'll let Mike answer it because he's got more information on it.
Yeah, can you answer your question? FSC Engineering is doing the review of the pump. He's only started that a couple of weeks ago because from the chief, I got all the manuals for that pump. I turned them over to him to make sure the curve was going to be adequate. He did that, he's questionable right now that that's going to work. So the board, and we can talk about it because it was part of the thing, and you've got to get back to Jeff, to take it to the next level, to do a visual of it, have a pump guy come down and make sure that it's worth pursuing. Yeah, and it's a valid concern. We don't know, but Jeff needs to do that and follow that through to see if it is worth pursuing.
So what we have to do as a board is weigh the potential savings against the costs to have someone look at it for us. And that's what we're doing.
Yes, Jim?
I should add that the fire chief let us know today that Chief McCoddle in Plastow, as opposed to lending it to the town of Newton, has convinced the town manager in Plastow to donate it to the town of Newton as a gift.
Yeah, no, that wouldn't have made it acceptable.
Yeah, it wouldn't have made sense to, you know, put money into restoring something that we then have to give back. Now that we're getting it for free, I like to be the optimist and go, okay, if it's $10,000 to fix it and fit it versus $80,000 to buy a new one.
Sixty to eighty.
Okay, we're all set with that? Any other questions with the pump? All right, we'll continue with the budgets. Tree Warden.
That's the care of trees.
It's right after the highway, same as highway, just flip the page.
Mr. Chair, I would move that we approve the care of trees budget, or Tree Warden.
I will...
For inclusion in the draft budget.
I will second for discussion, only to mention that it is a flat budget based on the previous year's budget. And while we have not spent it all, we never know how much tree work we need to do. So having that buffer is a necessity. And if it's not spent, then it goes back into the unexpended fund balance at the end of the year.
And it's a fairly minimal amount.
I mean, we're talking $3,000 budget. That's all I have.
Do you think we need a motion?
There was a motion and a second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we'll move to...
Gas station.
Gas station, I think we'll have here.
The SWDI.
Anything you'd like to say while we're looking at this, Pete?
As you can see from the last time, I did drop it down significantly again. The only total increase is $8,450 as opposed to the last one of $35,000.
I'd like to first start off by commending you on being able to cut quite a bit of your proposed increase. So thank you very much for taking another hard look at the budget.
And just for my education, what is site monitoring?
That is the test wells along our facility and a couple on Brookside Lane, I believe.
So it's the water monitoring?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I would move to include the solid waste disposal area budget in the town draft budget.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you, Pete. Okay. You don't have to fight a department, right?
Where'd he go? He's not here.
Not here.
He's not here. He laughed. I think we forgot.
So we're pushing that out?
Yep. Okay, so we'll jump down to D, Chief Jewett, update on firearm disposal.
Mr. Chair, before we do that, can we just, I will move to adopt the forest fire budget for inclusion in the town draft budget.
We already did that one.
Previous meeting.
We did.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, look who's left.
It's not on our list.
All my friends left.
Now, did you chase them away?
It happens.
Even your people are leaving.
I see that.
Okay, Chief.
So last meeting I was here, the board had asked for me to look into the, either the destruction of some firearms that we've had at the PD, or if there's a potential to sell them to get some proceeds for it. We've looked into it, I've looked at the RSA that the state has. Basically, they need to be auctioned. I've reached out to two licensed gun dealers that would be interested in doing a quasi-silent auction or some type of auction for a lump for all of the guns that we have. I think it would take us forever if we did individual online auctions. There's a lot of PDs that I've talked to that do individual. I really don't want to get into doing that. I'd rather just sell them as a lump sum if that's something that the board decides. I've reached out to ATF as well, and I've talked to a member of New Hampshire State Police to see if that's something for destruction, if there's something we can do. Both agencies can destroy them. It's got to go up their chain of command to find out what that would be.
So destroying them isn't a typical path?
A lot of agencies sell them. What they usually do is they auction them, and the money goes back to the PD or it goes back to the general fund. That would be up to the board to decide on which direction you want to go. I don't think we're going to get a substantial amount of money for these guns. You know, it's hard to say. It's something that I need to do periodically is clean out our evidence room and make sure that we're staying within compliance of Kalia, so that's part of why I'm pushing to get rid of these guns.
When you say you don't think substantial, I know it's ballpark, but what do you think?
Well, speaking to the two different gun dealers, I asked them, you know, basically what, you know, some guns could pull $50 apiece, some could be a few hundred dollars apiece, depending on what they are. You know, the more modern guns will pull more money. Some of the older ones may as well, but it all depends on what's there. I'm not efficient with guns to tell you what the values of them are.
How many guns have we talked about?
Slightly over 100.
Okay, slightly over 100, so even if it's a dust case scenario, we get $25 each file though. That's still some money coming back into the town.
Absolutely.
Now, is that, from what I understand, we have some that are air-driven and some that are... I can't say the word, bolts.
Mechanically.
Is that 100 guns total, or is that 100?
It's a mix. I don't have the exact number with me. I think there was a handful, I think there's 100 probably actual firearms.
Okay.
It's probably a handful of BB guns, airsoft, or whatever they are.
So we are talking, I mean...
About 100 guns.
It's not a huge amount of money, but...
Still money coming back in.
And am I right in assuming that there would most likely be some cost associated with destruction if it was to go to the ATF or whoever?
I would think so, and that's in those, the people that I talked to weren't at the levels that you could get that.
So I'm in favor of one lot auction of the guns?
I mean, the other thing I thought was, it's the right time of year. Well, no, I was thinking, maybe if you sat in the afternoon...
Santa Claus needs to get his load of guns to spread out to all the kids.
All right, I would just like to move to authorize the chief of police to move forward with contracting to auction off the guns.
Is the board okay with two, or would you like more than that?
What, two auction, two bids?
Two dealers.
Two dealers, yes.
I would like to see, I mean, the more dealers you have, the more bidding there's possible.
Yeah, but if there was an auction, probably the same people that have bid on the guns from this dealer are the same ones bidding from this dealer.
So could I get a second before we discuss?
Second.
Thank you.
Well, I was just thinking that, you know, not specifically the ones in town, but on 125, there are at least two gun shops, a third in Kingston, that are regular brick-and-mortar stores that sell guns. I know one, I personally actually know one because he's a client of mine, and I asked him, I don't believe he's been approached yet.
No, there's four in Plastow that I have in front of me, so that I know. Some of the dealers have said, you know, this one wouldn't be, it wouldn't benefit them, they probably wouldn't be interested.
Right.
So I mean, I most certainly can reach out and get more. Will that drive up the price? It may. I don't know.
I'm still in favor with it being sold as a lot.
Yes.
I don't want it nickel and dime, and just invites as many dealers that are likely, and whether they accept or not, whatever ones say yes, they're the ones who bid.
And once again, you know, it's a, they would be on display at the police station from, or even here at the...
No, 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 no.
No, 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 no.
What's a dealer get a percentage?
You set a time and a place where...
So let me back up here, because this motion is getting like really loud.
No, 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 the motion's been...
The motion wasn't, it was just in discussion.
No, because what you're describing, I would vote nay on, okay? Because I agree with what Lisa initially said, I just want them gone. Like my thing is, sell them, get them out of town, done.
Like the motion was for sell them as a lot.
Right. I don't want to put on a display for them. I want one person to come, look at them, bid us a price, done, gone.
No, because one person's going to walk in and go, I'm the only person bidding. I'll offer you a dollar piece for it against $100.
No, 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 somebody, so then the chiefs get that one. Somebody else can come in and look at them and get another bid, but I don't, I don't want like a display and it sounds like a fair, like a gun show or something like that. Just get them, get them sold and get them off.
No, you're just going to have different dealers come look at it.
Yeah.
Give them a price, and then the highest price gets it.
My perception is, and I defer to you on this, is that you will contact whoever might be interested. If they are, they will come, they'll look, they give you a bid, you collect the bids, top bid wins, done.
Seal, and we should sell them by seal.
That sound right?
Probably.
I don't even care, I'm not going to know if the chief gets a sealed or unsealed, and I don't care.
That we've always looked at.
Can you put a starting price on it? We want at least this amount.
No, we don't know the value.
Oh, no.
Because we don't know what the, we don't know the value of each gun.
Can I clean this up a little bit?
Get rid of them and sell them.
Can I say, I would, I guess there's a motion on the floor, so I can't, but I have a...
So, but if you could, my motion was just to authorize the police chief to contact dealers and auction off the guns as a lot.
Right.
That was my motion.
I like that one.
Okay, that's what the original one was.
Yes, that was the motion, that's what was seconded.
Yeah.
Everything else has been in discussion, but there have been no amendments proposed or motioned or carried.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So expectation is, you're just going to probably send us a memo at some point saying, done deal, this is what I got for.
Right.
And for my viewers and everyone that left me.
You're not a clear order room, don't you, Chief?
Certainly do, invited to every party. The dealers that I'm looking at, they're have to be in good standing, obviously, with the state and everything else. I just want to make sure that's clear.
Oh, absolutely.
I'm not picking, you know, a dealer, someone that's got a dealer's license today.
Well, I would expect as the chief of police that you would be choosing reputable dealers.
That's what I'm going with. I just wanted to make sure we spelled that out, that we would be going with a dealer that's...
It goes without saying.
Just want to make sure everybody...
We don't want to be like one of those TV shows where two months later, all our guns are found on the street with the gangs.
However, feel free to call me if you need any marketing strategies on how to extract the most from dealers.
Okay, let's move on.
I think I'm good then.
You're good.
All right, thank you.
I don't think we need you for anything else. Are you here for anything, or are you just bored and want to...
He's Joe resident.
Get some sleeping medication from us so he can watch the show.
Mentioned C, that we're going to postpone C.
Okay, yeah, we're going to, we had a letter from a resident that wasn't able to make it here tonight, so we're going to postpone that to the next meeting.
Thank you, go back to the budget book.
Okay, now we're going to go to the 2019 budget review continuation, A, health officer.
So I spoke to the board about this one a little while ago. These are expenses that he does not receive payment for. He gets paid for permits, medical, but he may be on the phone with people for hours on end trying to solve an issue or something like that where there's no permit. So this is basically payroll for him to recoup if and when that happens where there's no permit involved.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we include the proposed health officer budget in the town draft budget.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we'll move to B, legal.
The legal, we kept level funded. That's one of those ones that you just never know.
That would be under other?
It's under other government, yeah, other general government.
General government, okay.
Yeah.
It's your fifth tab. If you look on the thing, it says five.
Mr. Chairman, at this time, I would move that we include the proposed legal budget added to our proposed draft budget.
Do you get a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, C, insurance.
I'll be an aye.
Sorry, Matt.
The insurance budget went up a little bit on the accident and health, which is the fire department. Roughly about $300 increase, but it's been status quo for the last five years. Property liability has gone up a tiny bit, as well as the workers' comp, but the unemployment went down a little bit, so you've got a total increase of $2,100 on that line.
Which is really out of your control, anyway.
Yeah, yeah, it's based on the pool and the cases that have been filed, so it's not on our end. It's the overall.
I move to accept the insurance budget into the town draft budget.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, down to street lighting.
The street lighting has gone up a little bit. We're not really sure why, because we don't have that many streetlights, but it is what it is, so...
Kilowatts per hour, maybe, has gone up.
I don't know.
I think I ask this every year, what's the LED situation?
Nothing ever transpired with that.
So how do we get something to happen with that? Because we met, for the viewers at home, if they still have the TV on, the, I think we met three years ago, joint meeting Plastow, I think Atkinson and Kingston, maybe? And they were talking about LED lights are cheaper and we could kind of band together, so do we have... I don't have a problem approving the budget because it's pretty flat and stuff, but can we send out something to area boards? And we don't even have to meet, I think, and it's just, granted, the town manager in Plastow who had the idea is no longer in Plastow, but I don't know if we can send some sort of email or whatever around to these towns saying, what can we do in terms of LEDs and joint investment in LEDs?
Wasn't there a hangup with Unitel or one of them that wouldn't, because they own holes and stuff?
I don't know, maybe.
There's some type of a glitch there, that's why it never went in for a...
Does anyone have a comment?
Yes, Jim?
Just because this came up at a Rockland Planning Commission meeting, early, much earlier this year, and it turned out LEDs are really great, except for the fact that...
Frequency?
Go out today and replace... go out today and replace every sodium vapor light bulb in these towns, the cost would be, the recoup is like 20 years, because you have to, it's not just a screw out the light bulb, screw in a new one, like you could do at home with the LVDs, there, it's a slightly different system, so it's retrofitting all of these, yes, it would cost less money here, but the utility is not responsible for doing the conversion, and the cost of the conversion, nobody wants to pay for.
Okay, I'm good with the, I'll move to accept the street lighting budget as written into the draft town budget.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, then we're now to West Nile virus slash pest control.
Is this basically the pest control, not the West Nile virus?
It's both.
West Nile virus treatment, yes.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
Where is the West Nile mission?
So, we actually put pest end along with the West Nile virus, it's on the last of that page.
Yep.
Oh, okay.
And a slight increase on the pest control.
Yep, there was a little bit, because the library had a couple of issues this year with.
Mice?
No, the fleas. We did not include that in there, as you can see, we spent 3,000, we took that out, because that's hopefully a one-time thing, but I think the pest control at the transfer station would be rats and stuff that has taken on a little bit more.
Yeah, and that's a requirement, I think.
Yep, yep.
Could we make up that money by selling the rights to the?
Hides.
The video of the mouse falling through the ceiling?
Yeah.
I know, that should have made some money off of that one.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we include the pest control, proposed pest control budget in the draft of the town budget.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, now we can go to F, change to medical plan for employees.
The health insurance went up 10.2% this year, so we took it upon ourselves to meet with health trust and pick a lower costing program or plan, and so we've got it in the package for the chair to sign, and it's my understanding that we are down 3.2% now over last year.
So, the health, it's a reduction of 3.2%.
Yep, because we took a little lesser plan, we get kind of the same stuff, but we pay a little more out of pocket, so it's not affecting the taxpayers, and hopefully none of us will get sick, and we won't have to get sick.
But if you do get sick, you do have insurance.
Yeah, yeah, we do.
I would move to authorize the chairman to sign the new medical plan.
Second.
Discussion?
One question, have all the employees been apprised of this and?
Yeah, we had Grace come up and sit with me and Diane and Kim, and we met with health trust, Grace went back, shared it with all the employees, and they had a choice of two plans, and they all chose the one that we all decided to go with.
Okay.
So, everybody's happy.
Does this not make sure that we're not gonna have?
Yep, nope, everybody's happy.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Okay, we go to G, 2019, 2020 amended landscaping contract for town properties.
Now, we already reviewed this at our last meeting.
You reviewed the safety complex one.
This one is the additional.
This is you, right, and you, I told you I would get you an updated contract.
This is just a revised copy with the changes.
Correct.
Yes.
Removing the old fire station and putting in the bushwhacking for the rest of the town properties, so it went down a little.
Down is good.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, so we're looking at 31,140. So, I would move to sign the landscape contract.
I think you just have the chairman sign.
I would move to have the chairman sign the landscape, the amended landscape contract for 2019 through 2020.
Second.
Discussion?
I'll repeat the comments that I made last week, we're now in a position where we're paying out, I believe, more than it would cost to hire somebody for the town, and I cannot see spending $31,000 on.
And I will add my own responses to that as well, it is not just an individual or labor, it is, in fact, there is multiple labors, the spring cleanups, the fall cleanups, the work on Greenie Park itself with the irrigations, and the equipment that they need to have, which means we would have to own or rent, I still see this contracted service as being the more efficient model, that's my opinion.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Aye.
All right, have it. H, review quotes for printing town report.
I did review those.
We did get two quotes.
Yeah, but they weren't for the same number of reports.
Well, we asked for 300 and 500.
Okay.
And my thought is this year, Diane and I talked about this, we're thinking 300.
I agree.
It goes on the town report, we've still got boxes downstairs.
And it goes on the website, too.
Yeah, that's what I mean, sorry, that's what I meant.
In fact, I went and looked at one of the town reports on the website, just the other day.
She did a great job on the book, I really like it, it's a flip book, so you get everything.
Yeah, I have one comment about that.
I didn't, you don't have a choice because of the size of the file, it can only take so much, and that was the only way they could do, put it up there.
So, maybe if it was put up in chapters or something, only because when it comes to the budget sheets, you're looking at it sideways.
Yeah.
That's a bit different.
We can talk about the website later, but we're rolling on the books right now.
I'm talking about the town report.
But that's how it goes in the town report, no matter what.
Yeah, but I can rotate that.
You gotta paper book.
All right, so what's the quote?
Huh?
We have the quote?
Yeah, the quotes are in there for.
So, do we have a comparison spreadsheet or anything?
Diane, I thought you had one, did you?
I don't know, I don't remember, it's too late now.
I know, we're tired.
Basically, there's only two of them, so MTL is the least of them, and I kind of like their idea of doing not all spiral, 'cause spiral bound costs more money, so they would do like a perfect bound, like just a regular book.
Yeah, that's, I mean, we used to get like 20 spiral bound, and all the rest would be perfect.
Yeah, it's not that expensive for the spiral bound, but I agree, it's harder to stack them and stuff, if you look at the price, I think it's only a difference of, what, 30 bucks or something, if that?
4.15 versus 4.20, price per book for spiral bound is 4.20, and then.
Not that much difference.
If it was 100 coil bound and 200 perfect bound, price would be 4.15, so you're talking five cents a book difference on the spiral bound.
Yeah, but we're okay, if you want, we can do the 100 with the spiral, 'cause those are the ones we all use and send out to the state, and the public can have the other ones.
So, Ram, we used the last two or three years?
Yep, two years, I think.
So, I think I did this last year, and I hate to do this on TV in public, but can we tell Ram that somebody's beating them right now and?
If they wanna lower their bid.
Yeah.
You have the right to negotiate, you can do it.
You can negotiate?
Yeah, 'cause I mean, Ram is, we're probably comfortable with Ram.
Well, we know what their book looks like, we don't know the silver company.
But Rams get kind of one opportunity, here's, here's the price we're looking for, if you don't want to do that, then we're going with the other.
Yeah, yeah, we can do that.
Good, I'll put you down for that. We'll negotiate.
Okay, they ought to be on the next meeting.
Thank you.
One second, I'm looking at the Ram one, yes, in my seeing that it's $9.42 per page, it's over 150 pages.
Yes, you are.
As opposed to the other quote, which is 3 cents per page, it's over 150.
Mm-hmm.
That's a big, big difference. I don't know how many pages I currently thought we'd be.
I think it's been like 140, 147, the highest, I don't think we've gotten less, less the board wants to put a lot more stuff in there this year for the fire station, I don't know.
I think we've talked about the fire station.
We try to keep things at a minimum and.
Yeah, I mean, I think there should be a little, there should be a section on the fire station, but it doesn't, I don't think it has to be fancy.
It doesn't have to be pages, right?
Yeah, right, yeah.
And 365 per book versus 4.414, which helps with the.
Right, we've used Ram multiple years, and we're comfortable with them, so if they can match or beat the other company.
That's the other thing, is that we are not familiar with the quality of the work of the other company, whereas we are the quality of work from Ram.
Right.
That's a bonus, so.
However, is it worth 51 cents per book difference?
Well, we're only doing 300 books anyway, so it's not gonna be much more, is it?
It's a couple hundred dollars, provided that you don't go, well, I can't picture us going over 150 pages.
I, no, I don't think so either, not unless we have a lot of Warren articles.
All right, let's, oh, that's fine.
Jim, any idea on the planning board articles, will there be many of those this year?
There may be the correct, the stone water management that we've been working on all summer, that would bring us into line with the requirements for the end of school.
But nothing lengthy, you know, page after page for the Warren article?
Exactly, on eight pages.
Oh, could it?
Yeah.
Okay.
I think, I think the document that we're working on is to remove a single page and replace it with eight very specific, pages are very specific.
All right.
Okay.
So, what was the decision?
So, it'll be.
It's $154 difference between.
Yep.
We can see if Ram will meet or beat their price and make a decision in the next meeting.
We know, yeah, we know the quality of Ram printing, I would offer them the option of.
Right.
So, is there a deadline here?
We can vote on it at the next meeting, that way we can get the issue for you.
Yeah, cool.
Okay.
Okay, that'll be on the next agenda, let's jump down to I, settlement agreement, New England telephone operations. Nancy, Diane, is that a?
So, you need the order selection, you have to sign the agreement, the settlement agreement that you, for the telephone polls.
This is the New England Tel abatement that's been in place for the last three years, we've finally negotiated a settlement with them, you already signed the abatement form a couple of meetings ago for the amount of the abatement, this is the settlement agreement that Andrea made sure they put in writing, saying that they won't go after us for the last two years, it's only 12, 13, and 14, not, or maybe it's 13, 14, 15.
12 to 15.
And not 16 and 17, 'cause we adjusted the figures for those, so it's all in that agreement, we need that to go with the check back to them.
And this is going back to who?
The New England telephone, there's the whole state, we're in a cust- consortium, is that what they call it?
Assortment.
That's it, where we were all in with the attorneys, and they were working it out, and a lot of the towns had settled, we're settling now, so to put this out, you know, put it to bed, so the documents were made up by the attorneys and assigned, reviewed by me and Andrea, and everything is in place.
So, we just need the board or the chair?
The chair, I believe.
Do I move to have the chair sign the New England telephone?
Oh, no, I take it back, I'm sorry, there is five for you, I put two extra.
I rephrase, I move.
Sorry.
The board sign the New England telephone settlement agreement.
Second. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, Larry, you wanna do J?
J, per RSA 31:95B to accept and expend unanticipated funds to the food pantry from Estherx Garage in the amount of $250.
Second, with appreciation.
With appreciation, absolutely.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, per RSA 31:95B to accept and expend unanticipated funds to the food pantry from the Gale Library Trustee in the amount of $60.
Second.
Discussion?
With appreciation.
With appreciation.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And per RSA 3195B to accept and expend unanticipated funds to the food pantry from Scott and Mary Jo McCullough, the amount of $500.
Second, with.
With appreciation.
Discussion?
You're on.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, any other business?
So, we have the 5K, which is a jingle run this Saturday at the safety complex.
It can be the frozen run.
It's gonna be like 28 degrees, so you're gonna wanna run.
Run fast.
But there'll be hot chocolate and stuff inside, Santa Claus will be there, can bring Toys for Tots or for New Hampshire foster care books, there's a fun run for the kids at 12:30, where they can get medals, and then 1 o'clock is the race, there'll be a DJ, you can still sign up if you want to run in the race, or you just want to come for the festivities, it's 12:30 for the fun run for the kids, 1 o'clock is the race for the adults, and we'll hopefully see people there.
Did you say where it's being held?
At the fire station.
What time?
Last time was the handheld, right?
Right, right, well, that was a different one, but the, so it's around 12 o'clock, you show up at 12:30, the kids have their race, and then 1 o'clock is the adults.
Okay.
And Santa will be there, 12:30 to 2:30, I believe.
Okay, we're gonna sign manifest abatements and tax credits.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we sign the vendor manifest dated 12/4/18 in the amount of $2,970.65, of which $1,342,000 goes to the December 2018 San Juan High School District payments, and $531,356 goes to the Rockingham County warrant.
And what, if you don't mind my asking, is the Rockingham County warrant?
The Rockingham County warrant is the county budget as approved by the county delegation on an annual basis, it is, this is not debatable, this is not.
Yeah, no, I was.
That is Newton's share of running the county.
They send us a bill and we pay it.
Right.
This is that little percent per thousand for county?
Yeah, yes.
Thank you, that's what I thought it was, and I just wanted to make sure it was, thank you, I do second your motion, by the way, if it hasn't been done yet.
Okay, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chair, I would move that we sign the fire rescue manifest dated 12/4/18 in the amount of $4,904.74.
Second.
Discussion?
And I'm assuming this was already taken into account with that 200,000 that we still have in the budget?
I believe.
Yeah, Mike got all up there.
He was saying as of today, yeah.
Right, yeah, he got all.
This is not taking away from that amount that he gave us early in the season.
Right, right, right.
All in my mind.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we sign the payroll manifest for the pay period 11/11. Mr. Chairman, I would move that we sign the payroll manifest for the pay period 11/11/2018 to 11/24/2018 with a pay date of 11/29/2018.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. What do you think you wanna do?
I move to sign tax abatement for Tax MAP 5-3-10 in the amount of $626.88 for tax year 2018.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I move to sign paper tax abatement for Tax MAP 5-3-13 in the amount of $112.55 per tax year 2018.
Second.
Now.
Discussion?
I have one question for education here. What's the difference between a tax abatement and a paper tax abatement?
The paper abatement will go directly to the tax collector to take it off the bill. The person hasn't paid that bill yet, so the paper abatement goes to Mary Jo. We don't give the person the check. She just minuses off that tax bill.
And a standard tax abatement is essentially a refund check that goes to the property.
Correct. They've already paid, and the interest is calculated and goes back to them.
It's too, too late for education.
Okay.
Hey, no, it's not.
Matt, you wanna do the last one?
So, I would move to sign veterans' tax credit for MAP 8-3-11-28, starting tax year 2019.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. We have a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
Well, one moment. Do we have any announcements?
Yeah, you did it already.
Yeah, Matt did it already, but if there was any other announcement?
Just to remind, let people know that tomorrow is the senior luncheon, which will be at the Roamer. I will bring the board and towns, close to this holiday greetings to the Elvis World Theater.
Okay, and you'll all be watching the funeral, correct?
I don't know. Probably not. It's sold out, by the way.
Okay. Any other announcements? What's that?
Who seconded it?
Second what?
His announcement?
Join, no, the, oh, sorry. Okay. Lisa made a motion to adjourn, and then, okay.
Yeah, we put on hold for a second.
So, I remake my motion to adjourn at 9:25 PM.
Second.
Too late, Jim did it.
Discussion, roll call vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, everybody. Have a good night. It's late.